I call the order.
I call the order. The regular business meeting of the Lakewood City Council on June 10, 2024, at 7:01 PM. To connect with the council meeting, please use one of the following links at LakewoodSpeaks.org or Lakewood.org/councilvideos. For online public comments, you may post comments of any length on LakewoodSpeaks.org, an online forum for public comments. We will again be leaving that open overnight tonight and through 10:00 AM tomorrow morning for anyone that is watching this evening would like to comment there and/or watching tomorrow morning. Anyone who would like to address the city will be given an opportunity during several points of public comment throughout the evening. We've got a couple of ordinances. We'll have second hearing on this evening as well as general public comment that will follow after those. With that, will the clerk please call the roll?
Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor Strom? Here. Olver?
Yes.
Mayat Guerrero?
Here.
Stewart?
Here.
Ryan?
Yes.
Charzai?
Here.
Labir?
Here.
Nystrom?
Here.
Lo?
Here.
Cruz is absent. Sinks?
Here.
Tanner present. Mayor Strom, you have a quorum. Okay, thank you. And with that, for those able to stand, I would ask you to do so for our pledge of allegiance and remain standing afterwards for a moment of silent prayer. All members of the city council have the responsibility to comply with the terms of Charter 7.2 Prince B and excuse themselves from voting on any matter in which they determine they have a personal, financial, or business interest. The city council is empowered by Charter 7.2 Prince B to agree by unanimous vote excluding the member at issue to excuse any member of the council from voting on a matter in which they determine such member has a personal, financial, or business interest. Counselor Mayat Guerrero, I will hand over the floor to you for item number five this evening.
Excellent, thank you. I will just say as context that I believe that this is the third year ever of Lakewood, City of Lakewood doing a Pride Month proclamation. And so want to recognize as always that while proclamations can feel purely symbolic, they are symbolic of progress and that is the hope behind them. Proclamation, June 2024 is Pride Month, whereas the city council of the City of Lakewood proclaims the month of June 2024 as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer LGBTQ+ Pride Month in recognition of the fact that all human beings are born free and equal in dignity and rights. And whereas LGBTQ+ individuals have had an immeasurable impact on the cultural, civic, and economic success of this community, state, and nation. And whereas this nation was founded on the principle that every individual has infinite dignity and worth. And the city council calls upon people of this municipality to embrace this principle and work to eliminate prejudice everywhere it exists. And whereas the City of Lakewood is committed to supporting visibility, dignity, and equality for LGBTQ+ people in our diverse community. And whereas while society at large increasingly supports LGBTQ+ equality, it is essential to acknowledge that the need for education and awareness remains vital to end discrimination and prejudice against members of the LGBTQ+ community. And whereas, celebrating Pride Month influences awareness and provides support and advocacy for the city's LGBTQ+ community and is an opportunity to take action and engage in dialogue to strengthen alliances, build acceptance, and advance equal rights. Now, therefore, on behalf of the city council and the people of the City of Lakewood, I, Wendy Strom, Mayor of the City of Lakewood, Colorado, by virtue of the authority vested in me, do hereby proclaim June 2024 is Pride Month.
Thank you, counselor. All right. With that, we will move on to our consent agenda this evening. Counsel, do we have any items that anyone would request to remove from the consent agenda this evening?
Mayor, can we pull eight, nine, and 11?
Anyone else? Okay. With that, will the city clerk please read the consent agenda as amended into the record?
Item six, ordinance O-2024-13, setting the salaries of municipal court judges. Item seven, ordinance O-2024-14, authorizing a supplemental appropriation of general funds to the 2024 annual budget in the amount of $1,230,300 and authorizing the expenditure of these funds by the Division of Community Resources for the city match payment required to install solar panels on the roof and parking canopy of the Whitlock Recreation Center. Item 10, adopting Title 10, Chapter 38 of the Lakewood Municipal Code, establishing a pilot program for restricted residential parking areas within the City of Lakewood, Colorado.
All items this evening on the consent agenda are ordinances on first reading and with that are not accompanied with a public comment or public hearing this evening. For anybody that is here this evening that would like to make a comment on any of the items on the consent agenda, they will be back for second reading later on this month. So please consider waiting until the next regular meeting where you can make your comment during public hearing at that time or of course on Lakewood Speaks. And with that, do we have a motion for the consent agenda?
Mayor Strom, I move to order all ordinances introduced on first reading to be published in the Denver Post with public hearings set for the date included in the ordinance, all of which are included in the consent agenda and introduced into the record by the city clerk.
Second. A motion has been made and second. Is there any additional discussion on the motion? All right, and with that, go ahead and pass votes, submit votes on the consent agenda. Can we get a vote for Counselor Lo?
You have to push his button.
Yeah, will you push his? Yep. Thank you. All right, and that passes. 10 yes, no, nay. Will the city clerk please read item number 12 into the record?
Mayor, would you like to consider the other items that were pulled off consent?
You want to do those first? Sure.
Item eight, ordinance O-2024-15, authorizing the purchase of real property located at 121211-1215 Quell Street, 1303 Oak Street, and 10811 West Collins Avenue for property to expand the Public Works Maintenance Facilities and acceptance of a deed therefore.
All right, and with that, we'll open it up for council comments and questions. Counselor Olver, would you like to start since you pulled the item?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'm going to keep it short because it is the first reading, but I just look at this, the area we're looking at here and go, it's next door to a light rail station and the best use of that property is in multifamily housing. All along the light rail, we are putting in, everybody's putting in more and more and more high-rise apartments, et cetera, et cetera. And so I'm just thinking that we should have more of a discussion next time. It's kind of a heads up that next time we should have a discussion about what we're going to put in there because I think that's the wrong thing to put there.
Thank you, Counselor. Ms. McKinnney Brown, questions come up regarding procedure this evening with the items that we're pulling off the consent agenda. Are we having a discussion or is this just a vote?
By your own charter and procedures, the only action you can take this evening is to move these forward for publication. All formal action, including public hearing, has to happen on second reading or subsequent.
Okay, so that excludes any council conversation as well?
That's typically, that has historically been how both the charter and the council rules and procedures have been interpreted.
Okay, thank you. All right, well, counsel, thank you for your patience with me as we navigate through this. We'll go ahead and move to an individual vote on this item. So we need a motion to move forward on item number, are we on eight?
Mayor Strom, I move to order ordinance O-2024-15, introduced on first reading to be published in the Denver Post with public hearings set for the date included in the ordinance.
Second. All right, with a motion and a second on the floor, counsel, please cast your votes. All right, and with that, we, that passes with eight yeses, two nays, the nays being Olver and Labir. Move on to item number nine. Will the clerk please read item number nine into the record?
Ordinance O-2024-16, authorizing the City of Lakewood to acquire certain real property, including a building and surface lots at 7898 and 8,000 West Colfax Avenue in Lakewood, Colorado, 80214, subject to contingencies and approvals relating to a Colorado Department of Local Affairs grant for the purchase, renovation, and operation of a navigation center to serve the unhoused.
Thank you. And with that, I would ask for a motion on item number nine.
Mayor, I move to order ordinance O-2024-16, introduced on first reading to be published in the Denver Post with public hearings set for the date included in the ordinance.
Second. All right, counsel, please cast your votes. And that passes nine yays, one nay, the nay being Counselor Olver. Will the clerk please read item 11 into the record?
Ordinance O-2024-18, amending Lakewood Municipal Code, Chapter 10.63.010, to authorize parking enforcement officials to issue municipal parking summons and complaints for violations of the Lakewood Traffic Code pertaining to parking on the public rights of way.
Thank you, and may I have a motion for this item?
Mayor, I move to order ordinance O-2024-18, introduced on first reading to be published in the Denver Post with public hearings set for the date included in the ordinance.
Second. All right, a motion has been made and second, is there? Counsel, please cast your votes. And that passes nine yeses, one no, the no being Counselor Olver. Will the clerk please read item 12 into the record?
Item 12, ordinance O-2024-11, declaring the intent of the City of Lakewood to acquire interest in property for public purposes for the construction of a shared-use path along the extended alignment between South Reed Court and South Pierce Street and authorizing negotiations with property owners, acceptance of conveyance instruments, and commendation of real property interests, subject to further council approval.
Thank you. And with that, we do have also a staff presentation on LakewoodSpeaks.org for anyone interested in the topic that has not viewed that or other material yet. And with that, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Do we have anyone that would like to speak on this topic? No one has signed in up here. Anybody that would like to speak to this topic? All right. With no one desiring to speak, we'll go ahead and move forward. And at this time, we'll open it up to the floor for comments and questions from council member. We do have Director Max Kirschbaum and Ray Hill here, city engineer, available to answer any questions this evening as well. Do I have any council questions? Counselor Stewart?
Thank you. My question really quickly, this wasn't mentioned in the presentation or the staff memo, but is this piece of multi-use path included in our connectivity plan?
This location was included in the list that was developed by LAC a couple of years ago, and it was also included in the downtown Lakewood urban connectivity plan.
Thank you. Counselor Lo?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you everyone for tolerating me joining by Zoom. I appreciate it. I'm a few time zones ahead traveling for work this week, so appreciate the chance to weigh in on a couple of these important items. Mr. Kirschbaum, thank you very, very much for the context you've already provided on this. Look forward to supporting it. One question that we talked maybe a little about, but I'd love to just clarify, Mr. Kirschbaum and Mr. Hill, when this is, if this is constructed as planned, as I understand it, it will bisect Pierce at a location that doesn't have a dedicated crosswalk. I definitely have, I understand all the value of the connectivity. Has the city sort of looked at the implications of that? And is there a plan or a possible plan in the works to put a crosswalk there once we have cyclists cutting through and getting into Pierce at that location?
Crosswalks are typically determined based on use. There was a crossing at this location or just a little bit south of it several years ago, which was determined to be not used. And so at that time, it was removed. At this time, we would reevaluate the need after this path is constructed.
Thank you. And so just one brief follow-up, there's not, there's not concern that we're, I guess, if it became a safety concern for folks that were entering Pierce at that point, that would be, I presume that would be a factor in favor of putting a crosswalk in at that point?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other council questions, comments? All right. May I have a motion?
Mayor, I move for the adoption of ordinance O-2024-11 on second and final reading.
Second. All right, with that motion being made in second, I'll ask you to go ahead and cast your votes. And that passes 10 yays, zero nays. Moving on to item number 13, will the clerk please read 13 into the record?
Item 13, ordinance O-2024-12, amending Title 17, Article 4, Section 3, supplemental standards for accessory dwelling units.
Thank you. And for this evening, our topic on accessory dwelling units, we do have a presentation from our planning commissioner, Mr. Kip Kolkmeier. There is also additional information available on LakewoodSpeaks.org. Mr. Kolkmeier, we'll give you the floor.
Thank you very much, Mayor, members of the city council. I don't have a lot to add from the study session that you all had on this issue back March 18th. I will remind you that this actually, the question about eliminating some of the barriers to ADUs was first raised by city council more than a year ago. And after that point, as in August of last year, the planning commission held a study session, and then we held public hearings on these recommendations on October 4th, October 18th, November 8th, and November 15th. The comments that we received were, for the most part, very supportive of additional flexibility, but we did have some concerns raised about whether this was opening some new loophole in terms of development of ADUs. Just going to make a couple of comments and then take your questions. Big picture, again, 42,400 single-family homes in our city, 42,400. In the last 11 years since we've allowed ADUs, we've gotten 25, only 25. At the same time, over the last several decades, we have lost a third of the people, the human beings that live in most of our single-family residential neighborhoods. As our population has aged, as families have gotten smaller, so density has dropped dramatically in our traditional single-family residential neighborhoods. Affordability is the problem. ADUs are a way to provide some of that density to come back. The reality is because of tap fees, and we talked about this at the study session, we're probably not going to see a huge number of ADUs. We've seen 25 in the last 11 years. If we were to get 10 times that amount in a year, I would be very surprised. That's 20 over a decade, 200, again, compared to 42,400 units. So a reasonable question, I think, is why do we bother? Because these are not going to be terribly impactful. And the reason is, and this is something that the planning commission in a number of our recommendations want you to focus on. Our single-family residential neighborhoods are at risk of a death spiral because of the declining density. They are less economically sustainable. They are less socially sustainable. What we need to do is find ways to bring back the diversity of generations, bring back families, bring back kids, bring back hopefully reopening schools that have been closed because we have a circumstance that is getting worse and worse in terms of affordability. because we have a circumstance that is getting worse and worse in terms of affordability. And for every constituent that tells you they are worried about their property taxes going up, it is a direct through line to the value of property, its supply and demand, that's why property taxes are going up. So, the current ADU restrictions we have, and we're suggesting in these loosening of a number of those, are really meant to address the fundamental problem with our current zoning ordinance. It squeezes the life out of neighborhoods. We incentivize two things in our single-family neighborhoods. One, wealthier people buying single-family homes because the costs have gone up, those same families tend to be smaller. And then, secondly, because it costs so much more to acquire a single-family residence, and you're only allowed to build a single-family residence, the primary incentive is to tear it down and build a McMansion. Neither of those address our affordability crisis, and therefore, this should really be seen in that context. With that, I'd just be happy to answer any questions. You may have questions about owner occupancy or some other issue in these recommendations, but I'd be happy to take those questions.
Thank you, Commissioner. Counselor Maia Guerrero.
Thank you. My only question is that we did have a change at the state level, of course, also easing EDU in general, and I'm not asking, of course, for a full legal analysis of that, but are there key components within this that you think are essentially like no longer as critical as they would have been? Like, can you run us through just a couple of those top lines that we're seeing being solved at that state level?
I can, and I'll try a little bit, but really, the city attorney's office is the one that will have to advise you on that. One of the things that I, in just my layperson's review of the state statute, is that these recommendations are almost fully in line, and remember, these were adopted before the latest legislative session even began. So, I think with these recommendations, my understanding is, we will primarily be in compliance with the dimensional limitations and other restrictions on ADUs. What this does not address at all is the second part of that bill, which is, are you an ADU-friendly town, and have you, you know, come up with mechanisms to encourage people to build and have models available and expedited permitting and a lot of those things? None of that's in here. We're just talking about the barriers to permitting.
Thank you so much. Counsel LeBure.
I didn't really have a question, just wanted to thank you for all the work you've done on this, really appreciate, you know, always appreciate your thoughtful perspective on these issues, and just wanted to comment on the TAP fees. I think the city should be looking at that and engaging with the TAP fee and where we might be able to subsidize or support people in their interest in creating this type of product, and I think that's, you know, part of the reason you'll continue to see me be a little bit conservative on certain spending measures, because I really want to make sure that we find some funds to put towards some of these potential housing issues. And so, I'm hoping that we create a housing fund at some point, and I'm hoping that we set aside some dollars to address these kind of things, so, but just want to thank you for all the work that you did on this.
Counselor Over.
Thank you, Mayor. You talked about TAP fees again, and there was only 25 ADUs in 11 years. Do you know how many water and sanitation districts we have? And the next question is going to be, are the AD, have the ADUs over the last 11 years been concentrated on the ones with low TAP fees?
Yeah, and I can't speak to that precisely, but I do understand we have, staff probably knows, it's like 27 or something different district, 25? And there is a district where I think there has been a disproportionate number of the 25, because they don't currently have a TAP fee. It is a very important part of whether it makes economic sense. The other thing, though, on TAP fees, is that a lot of the changes that the planning commission recommended are designed to make an ADU more economical overall. So, to the extent a TAP fee is high, it makes a little more sense at 1,400 square feet or 1,000 square feet than it does at 700 square feet.
Right, and so, that one district, does that happen to be an area that includes large lots and small buildings, so they would actually make sense for ADUs to go in there? Like, I think of Solterra. You're not going to get any ADUs going in there, because the houses are already taking up most of the land, but if you go, I don't know, Garrison, near the Garrison Street Light Rail Station or something like that, you're going to have large lots, and that would be conducive to ADUs.
Yeah.
And so, I was wondering if there's correlation, because, you know, correlation doesn't prove causation. That's a big old thing.
Yeah, and I think that's a really important point. These recommendations do not suggest changing any of the dimensional limitations that exist, right? On every lot, you've got an envelope you can build in, so on a single-family lot, regardless of the size, you got to have setbacks, front, side, back, you have height limitation, and you have site coverage. So, this, these set of recommendations do not change any of those. So, the existing building envelope on every single lot in a single-family residential area remains the same. So, if they don't have room to build, they cannot build. We have not changed that.
Right. I would, one last thing for now. You also mentioned supply and demand, I keep hearing that one a lot, and I've been thinking about along those lines, and when you talk to any Realtor, the three things that are important, when you're buying a house, it's location, location, location. And I look at where Lakewood is, in between, the mountains are right here, the city is right here, we're in prime real estate for the metro area. I mean, you know, the people will want to come to Lakewood over Aurora or Thornton or Parker, well, maybe not Parker, but, you know, my point is that we are in a very prime location, and so, trying to lower the costs of our housing here is, I don't think will actually work, because we're in demand, and, which kind of goes back to the supply and demand. So, we're on a different page on this one, I just wanted to point that out, that I don't think very much of what we do here is going to have much of an effect, because I just see houses going for sale in my neighborhood, selling like that, and the price is going up, and they're still selling like that, and they're still selling like that. I think the thing that will lower the price of housing will be a recession, or a down, yeah, I know, but we've been through them, we've been around a bunch, you know, the, I remember the 80s recession, when you could buy two condos here, two bed, two, one-bedroom condos for $50,000, which they're both probably worth $500,000 right now. But, it wasn't that people, we were building, doing anything special, it was the economy and how much people were making, and there was 10% of the people here were out of work. And so, I mean, everybody you knew, knew somebody who was out of work, and you just don't see that right now. So, I'm just saying that we have a different opinion on how hard we should be working at this, and that's all I have for now.
Well, and I guess the only thing, and it's a legitimate point, I personally believe that this is the best place in the metropolitan area to live, but this problem is not unique to us. It exists throughout the entire metropolitan area, it exists in Aurora, it exists in, up in the mountains, it exists statewide, it exists all across the nation. So, all other things being equal, then I think that argument makes sense, but things are not. We have an affordability crisis everywhere.
Thank you. Counsel Ryan.
Thank you very much for the presentation, and actually, very much for the study session presentation and all the work that the planning commission put in this. Certainly, there's a lot to really like in the proposals here. I just have a few questions on the owner occupancy piece of it. So, in some of the language that the planning commission is proposing that we adopt is that "a permit for an ADU shall only be issued to an owner occupant or their designee." Do I read that correctly, or the intention of the planning commission would be that after the permit is issued, that the owner occupancy requirement would no longer exist? Is that correct?
That is correct, and that actually is a provision that I'm, I think council would have to implement as a result of the state statute, because the state statute, which will be effective a year from now, says you cannot have more than that requirement, and you're not even allowed to do that requirement for a new build.
No, I understand that that would be the law as it would go into effect June 30th of 2025, but as of now, I mean, is, did the planning commission receive any testimony or find some evidence to show that, you mentioned two things, one, increasing the density in our neighborhoods, and also the fact that we're relying more on wealthier individuals to buy the, buy homes. Does the owner occupancy address either one of those two concerns?
You know, I would say that the owner occupancy issue right now, we felt very strongly that the covenant requirement, which was so onerous, should go.
Agreed.
So, then the question is, what's the most effective way, if you want that to be a requirement, what's the most effective way? It's to do it at permitting, because at permitting is when, most practically, the city is able to make that determination. If it extends beyond that, then it becomes a code enforcement issue, and I think there's some concerns about whether that, you know, would be a workable code enforcement issue, but I understand that that might be the desire of some members of council.
And then, I want to pick up on the last piece, the ADU should be issued only to an owner occupant or their designee. I come more from a corporate background, that is a phrase that I see more in when I'm, when folks are referring to corporations, an LLC, a partnership, some sort of corporate entity. What would the design, what was the designee thought there?
Right, so that's not true in the land use context. In the land use context, you're primarily talking about the contractor, or the architect, or someone else, that the property owner, because the property owner doesn't go through the permitting process, they've authorized it, but their designee may be the one who actually goes to the permit desk.
So, so actually, we may never need to have an owner be, to occupy the property at any point in time, just, we just have to have a designee that's responsible for that property at that time?
I don't believe so. I think the way we drafted it, the clear intention is that it has to be owner occupied at the time of the permit issuance, or application, rather. So, the or designee is simply the person who makes that representation on behalf of the owner, but the intent is not to say there's no owner occupation, no owner occupied requirement at permit, it is required.
All right, thank you very much.
Counsel Nystrom.
Thank you for that clarification, because I share the same concern. I don't know whether, you know, our city attorney might want to weigh in on that as well. I guess the question that I had is with respect to TAP fees, and again, whether this is a staff question or something you may be able to address, but can you give us an idea of what a typical TAP fee is currently?
Yeah, and part of the problem is the inconsistency, because if you're in Consolidated Mutual, that's a private water company, I know that a TAP fee for an ADU, they're now talking about about $30,000 to tap, and that's just to connect. So, you still have to pay a contractor to dig, you know, to the main line in order to get that connection, and that's just the water connection, and then you also have a sewer connection. We certainly have heard a lot of testimony of, about Green Mountain, and TAP fees in the $16,000 range, and then, of course, there's also a sewer as well. So, there's variance, but we have a couple of districts, most notably, that are exceptionally
Counsel Sinks.
Thank you. Couple of comments, so, again, the state law doesn't take effect until June next year, and it seems like the way we've written ours, nothing would need to change when it goes into effect, is that correct?
Well, I would defer to the city attorney on that. My quick review is that we are substantially in compliance, but they may have particular changes that they think are necessary.
Great. When I was reading and studying this, one thing that I thought of was someone that owned a duplex. So, an owner has a duplex, two renters, right there, and I don't see any big difference if it's not an owner occupied ADU, of course, at the build, as you were explaining, but let's say he moved, the owner that got the permit moves, and then somebody else moves in, and, or somebody else rents it, he decides to rent it, and, so I don't really see a big problem with an owner occupied requirement being put aside, because people rent out properties all the time without living there. So, I'm in favor of loosening it up. I also note that on the state law, it says that a number of municipalities have removed barriers, such as owner occupancy requirements. So, so it's pretty common, and it makes sense with other rental properties as well, in my mind, so, thank you.
Counsel Over.
Oops, thank you. I do have a follow-up to that, to the city attorney, because we spent quite a bit of time on the short-term rental ordinance, and that is owner occupied, and so, does this conflict, because it doesn't sound like this ordinance is owner occupied, it sounds like there could be a conflict there where somebody could say, well, I'm following this rule, but we want him to follow that rule.
So, Counsel Over, there is, the state bill that we're referring to, House Bill 241152, does have a provision under 25-35-103-2B, where it states that, in essence, that the city or a subject jurisdiction shall not require an accessory dwelling unit or any other dwelling on the same lot to be owner occupied, except, and then, it states, one of the exceptions is for a license or permit for a short-term rental on the parcel through a local law or program. So, we would still have the ability to enforce the short-term, short-term STR ordinance that we have, so that's one of the exceptions. Yeah.
Okay, that's enough for me now.
Counsel Ryan.
Thank you, I'd like to make an amendment to...
We haven't made a motion yet.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought we did, my mistake.
We'll come back to you. Okay, since we're moving on with questions, I would say, Commissioner, thank you very much for your presentation and all of your time on this, and maybe if you'll stick around in case any of the other questions come to you, but we do have some staff members here that can also answer questions, if anyone had, there were a couple mentions about attorney questions. Do we have any questions before we shift over to public comment on this topic? Counsel Stewart.
Thank you. I had a question about 6E on page 3, because there was also a parking minimums ordinance that passed at the state this year, so was curious if these conflict with each other?
Yes. So, to address the parking component, if the body, city council, determined, decided that they wanted to comply with the ADU bill that the state had passed, we would need to, the city would need to approve an amendment to the existing document, because there are exceptions for when parking can be required. Specifically, there are three exceptions, because overall, the bill states that the city may not require parking, and then it lists three exceptions where it can. Those exceptions are where it states that one new parking space on a parcel may be required that does not have an existing off-street parking space, including a driveway garage, or tandem parking space that could be used for an ADU, is in a zone district that, as of January 1, 2024, required... of January 1st, 2024, requires one or more parking spaces for the primary dwelling unit, and is located on a block where on-street parking is prohibited for any reason, including ensuring access for emergency services. So there are, there are going to be some limitations compared to the parking provision that's included in the ordinance before you, the proposed ordinance amendment, there are some differences with the state bill.
Is that something we should be amending now, or?
So our suggestion is that, at this point, that the body can decide, or basically consider what's been presented by the planning commission. We have until June 30th, 2025. If the body determines that they do want to address these potential other amendments, we would essentially be bringing back this ordinance. If that's the decision of city council, we'd be bringing this ordinance back probably first or second quarter next year for any additional amendments, such as the parking or exceptions to the owner occupancy to address like the STR or something like that.
Mayor Protam Sharazai.
Yes, thank you. Ms. Danik, to that point, would that then be an appropriate time for us? So it sounds like one piece is that we've removed barriers, but we also have an opportunity, and I think I'm understanding a requirement from 1152 that we create pass for encouragement, and that is not built in here. Like, we still understand that the tap fees are a restriction in how people can get these built. Would that first or second quarter bring back, include an opportunity for us to add those additions?
If that's what the body so chose, we could add those additional amendments. At this time, there are still going to be other considerations as well that the body needs to examine that may be best in a study session. So in addition to some of these additional proposed amendments, there may be, there may be some provisions that you all like and would like to build into the ADU ordinance, there may be some provisions you don't like, because there are still some design restrictions and dimensional restrictions, things like that. It would be up to the city council, if you wanted that included as well.
I guess I wondered too, and I'm asking to bring out a crystal ball, but is there a signal that the next session is going to see like this amended again, and we're going to be having to review additional compliance issues? And is there a timing that we need to consider with that?
As far as I can tell right now, no, not specific to ADUs. I have heard, and again, it's unsubstantiated, I don't want anyone to think this is true, but I have heard that perhaps tap fees might be examined in the legislative session that could, you know, potentially go hand in hand with something like this, but I don't believe that ADUs will come back necessarily next legislative session. There were two bills introduced this session. Obviously, the Senate bill, it was introduced, but it didn't go any farther, because the House bill was presented, and that's the one that was worked on in committee. It was pretty comprehensive, you know, in terms of building in the grant program and a bunch of other aspects. So I don't, I have not heard anything that that's going to come up again.
Counselor Nystrom.
I just wanted to add a comment regarding the concept here. I feel a little bit uncomfortable with the way this is structured now. I think the point and the positive aspect of ADUs, and I'm 100% in favor of that, but is to create more viability for someone to stay in their home, build an ADU, and have a family member live there, or worst-case scenario, rent out, but, you know, support for income in that respect. If we do not position this where we can't have, we have to have any ownership component, then we run the risk of people buying the houses, building the ADUs, and renting them both out, or buying existing houses with ADUs and renting them out. We, you know, I am not a proponent of creating more rental situations. We need to create more ownership situations in Lakewood. So, you know, that's just my perspective on why I'm concerned with the way this is written currently. Thank you.
Mayor Protam Sharazai. Oh, actually, I need to call on Counselor Lowe first, then Mayor Protam. Counselor Lowe.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Danik, I do have one quick question for you while we're on the topic of the effect of 1152, and I don't mean to put you on the spot. This is something, frankly, in preparing for the meeting tonight, I've been puzzling over a little bit. In 1152, the ADU bill that, and I know, I realize we don't yet sort of have a formal analysis of this bill, so if the answer is we need to get back to you, or that your office needs to get back to us, that's fine, I understand. There's this provision in 1152 that says, and I'm looking at it right now, bear with me while I toggle back and forth. A lot of the conversation, just headed up here. Nothing in this section prevents a subject jurisdiction or a local government. So it says, nothing in this section prevents local government from, and then if you scroll down to C, so C under that is allowing the construction or conversion of an ADU that is smaller than 500 square feet or greater than 800 square feet, or restricting the size of an ADU so that it is no larger than the size of the principal dwelling unit on the same lot as the ADU. And that's all under Section 29-35-103. So what is pretty clear to me, I'm not a lawyer, but what's pretty clear to me is that basically, that's basically saying a local government can't restrict an ADU that's between 500 and 750 square feet. And it's also saying a local government can restrict an ADU from being larger than the size of the primary residence on that plot. What's a little bit unclear to me is whether this legislation, when it goes into effect in a year, will restrict a local government from banning sizes in between those two things, if that makes sense. It clearly references this standard of, you know, the size of the primary residence on the lot, and it basically says, a local government can pass an ordinance that says that the ADU can't be larger than that. But it's not clear to me if it's banning a local government from restricting ADUs that are, that are smaller than that, if that makes sense. And I wondered if you had a read on that or not.
So I do. So when we start with three, as you mentioned, it says, nothing in this section prevents a subject jurisdiction or other local government from, and then it says, allowing the construction or conversion of an ADU that is smaller than 500 square feet or greater than 800 square feet. So they're basically saying that is permissible, that a subject jurisdiction can allow that. They also can restrict, the subject jurisdiction can restrict the size of an ADU so it is no larger than the size of the principal dwelling unit on the same lot. So basically, they're actually sort of giving subject jurisdictions or cities such as ours the option to have a pretty wide latitude with what the size can be for these ADUs. So we, the city, city council can decide to restrict the ADU to any, I mean, we have 1,400 square feet is the suggested square footage here, but the body can decide to reduce that if it feels necessary, the body can decide to limit it to no larger than the size of the primary dwelling unit on the same lot. It's really up to the city. So it's, I wouldn't focus on necessarily the between 5 and 800 or 800 plus. It's really stating that the city, subject jurisdiction is permitted to allow the construction or conversion of an ADU smaller than 500 square feet or greater than 800 square feet, or restricted to the size of the primary structure. It gives us pretty wide latitude to determine the size.
Thank you, Ms. Danik, I think that's very helpful.
Counselor Mayat Guerrero.
I had that similar question, and then I also wanted to just share, I think I share some of the concerns that we want to make sure that ADUs are doing the maximum amount of good for affordability, for housing vulnerable people, for increasing Lakewood residents' ability to stay in their homes. And I just wanted to share that there was a piece on Colorado Public Radio a couple of weeks ago talking about this, and it really spoke to the idea that the vast majority of people in a nationwide study who build ADUs do end up either housing family members for free or below market level rent long-term, and that is what the majority of them are used, and that the occasion where ADUs are sort of, I guess, sort of abused, right, where they're not really what we're intending for with this body, with this, with this law in terms of short-term rentals above market value, essentially just moving out and renting both, tends to be folks in a higher tax bracket, and also tends to be very rare. And so recognizing that that is the data that I, that is really most recent and was a very large and thorough national study, I just wanted to reflect that while some of these things, and really making sure that we have the maximum amount of protections, I think is important, but I think, given that we are in a crisis of supply, to Counselor Over's point, right, the demand and supply, and saying that supply can't fix rates, I mean, that's Econ 101, right? And so I think that us making it as easy as possible, as soon as possible, is really critical here, and to be flexible and supportive, and then leave room for us to adjust in the future. And so I just recognize that there's a lot of really legitimate concerns there, but especially just given the study, given the statistics of what ADUs are used for, I feel really supportive of this as it is, and encourage us to be bold and take the steps that we need to, given that this is just a really necessary and relatively low-hanging fruit chipping away at our current housing crisis in the metro, in the state, and in the nation.
Counselor Sinks.
Thank you. And to Counselor Mayat Guerrero's comment, I'll read item 14 from the state law, quote, it says, "Increasing housing supply moderates price increases and improves housing affordability across all incomes," and they quoted some, and end of quote, and also throughout the state law, they quoted some studies there. So that's encouraging. And then I had a question about the 1,400 square feet. Nothing seems to be identified as far as how many levels, like two stories, or can you talk about that?
Sure, thank you, Counselor. So the planning commission obviously looked at that issue, again, on the dimensional standards, we're not suggesting any change. So right now, the ordinance says that an ADU can only be 30 feet high, whereas the primary residence can be 35 feet high. So, and we're not suggesting changing that, that's an existing limitation. So that goes to the question of how many stories. On the issue of the 1,400 square feet, I would love to tell you that that was a, you know, a carefully defined scientific number. It's an arbitrary number. It's an arbitrary number in the same way that 700 was an arbitrary number, but 700 is one that we know is, does not make it economical. The suggestion on 1,400 really relates to that being a number that is still less than the average house size in Lakewood, so again, there's a proportionality to it. But it is not, it is really meant to lower an obstacle, it's not that that's the magic number, and that's true of all of these provisions, which is each one, you could maybe say, this makes sense to have something on here, something on there, but every one of these are obstacles, right? And it may be that you have a homeowner that says, boy, based on my lot, I need 1,425 feet. Well, we're knocking that person out. And so there was a support on the planning commission to pick a number, that was the number that was picked.
Thank you. All right. Any more questions? All right, okay. Well, we will go ahead and open up the public hearing, then is there anybody? I don't have anyone signed up up here for speaking on accessory dwelling units. Do we have anybody that would like to speak? Nope. On accessory dwelling units, perfect. All right, go ahead and state your name and address, her name and ward, and you have three minutes.
My name is Amber Varwig. I'm from Ward 2, and I don't think I need three whole minutes for this. The reason I'm not on city council is you guys are a lot smarter than me, and you know what to do, okay? But I will say this over some things that I heard, I've never owned my own home, and I don't know that I'm ever going to get a chance to do that, which means if we don't have renting, then I won't be able to continue living in Lakewood. And there are so many people that are like me that are talking to me about these same things, which is why I'm pushing so hard for affordable housing, because if you really believe it's the best place for people to live, let's keep us here, right? Let's keep us here so that we can continue to invest in our communities, we can continue to invest in our schools, and in our neighbors, and the thing, our jobs, and our economy, because otherwise, we're going to have to go somewhere where they will let us do that, right? Like, that's how it works, is we'll have to leave for another place. My family wants to live in Lakewood, and there are many families who feel the same way, who are being priced out of their homes. And by homes, I don't necessarily mean mortgages. When I'm talking about housing or homes, I'm talking about a roof, four walls, indoor plumbing, okay? I'm talking about a safe place for people to have their things. It needs to be affordable enough that people can live there, but before we completely say, oh, well, renting isn't for Lakewood, let's remember that owning isn't for everyone. Not everyone's always going to have that opportunity. You can't put $5,000 down, and if you both work hard, another $3,000, you own your home, it's not like that anymore, and it will never be like that again. So we need to be realistic, and we need to remember that for every homeowner, there's so many more renters, and that with climate change, renting is the future. Single-family homes use so many more resources that whole families in the neighborhood could be using. And so whereas I'm not against people owning homes, I'm not, the idea that we need to make sure everybody can own their home, well, not unless you can really make sure everybody can do that, otherwise, I think it behooves you to make sure that renting is not only available but affordable for those of us for whom reality is a little more firm. I know that I'm not going to be in the White House in five years, and I know I'm not going to own my own home in five years either, and that's just my reality, and it's the reality of many, and I just wanted to remind you that not everybody has the same reality. Thank you, and have a lovely evening.
Thank you, Ms. Varwig.
Do you have the sheet?
I actually agree with the renting and only housing. You talked about that you didn't think it would be a good idea because families would be, families would be renting to their families. Well, have you ever thought about the place that I live in, the family's members also rent to their families? So if you want to bring up fairness, let's do it all along the market, because if you're renting into big apartment buildings, they're federal funded, and they're supposed to be going for low-income housing, and you have family members that work in metro solution, and they're renting to their families, and the law should be, and it should place, that both places should be rented to everyone. Everybody should have the same equality as everybody else. You want not to have this on the market... You want not to have this on the market, but I'm sure all of yous own homes and live in a home. Wouldn't you want your children to live in a home? Because they'll never be able to afford one unless we have people that care, that want to make housing affordable, and have the same jurisdiction as everybody else in federal government as far as housing goes, just like HUD housing. So I agree with this man, and I thank him for doing all this work and being supportive and understanding that we all would want the equality as everybody else. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reddick. May I please have a motion?
Mayor, I move...
First, I need to say, I'm from Ward 3, and my name is Connie Reddick.
Wait. Thank you, Ms. Reddick. We have it down. We have you.
My name is Connie Reddick. Thank you so much.
All right, we're ready for a motion.
All right. I move for the adoption of ordinance O-2024-12 on second and final reading.
Second. Any discussion?
I move to amend the provision in 17.4.3.1 under accessory dwelling unit to not strike out the first sentence. And that sentence is, the owner of the property on which an accessory dwelling unit is located shall occupy either the primary or accessory dwelling unit.
Second.
I'm happy to talk whenever it's appropriate.
So keeping only that first sentence and the part that goes prior to approval, all the way through, the covenant shall run with the property remains stricken out, is that correct?
That's correct. And the proposed addition in that section would also remain.
Counselor Mayat Guerrero, then Mayor Pratim Sharazai.
I have a question, I think because of the earlier back-and-forth on this exact part. So with this, is the aim of this amendment that it requires the owner and resident only, not a designee, to file the permitting? Or is this designed to ensure the owner must remain?
So the intention is to return that, at least that first sentence, back to the way the city council had originally passed it, and that is that the owner, that an owner would live in either the ADU or in the primary residence. So they're somewhere on the property.
But in perpetuity is the hope, not just for the permitting process? That's, I think, the part, that given the back-and-forth we had earlier, that I'm like a little...
That's correct.
Thank you.
Mayor Pratim.
Thank you. Ms. Danik, would that be out of line with 1152?
It would be. I will tell or remind the body that 1152 does not take effect till June 30, 2025. So if the body passes or adopts this amendment, there could always be the option to return and revisit this again next year, or obviously, the body could decline to do that and keep the language as proposed from the Planning Commission.
And it feels like we're conflating two ideas here. Like, one is who can access the permit, which the proposed language is addressing. So we want this to be the owner or the designee, and that was articulated by Mr. Kolkmeier as often your GC, who's pulling permits for you. And I just wanna understand, from Counselor Ryan, this is a different discussion on a requirement for residency in the ADU. And so it almost feels like those two things shouldn't be together if we were to make the decision to include this, because that becomes then a code enforcement. Like, you are getting your permit, you've met that requirement, you're the owner or you're the designee. That's requirement one. And now we're requiring an additional consideration that you must then live there, and that's past the permitting process. And I understand, this has come up before, we're, you know, we make laws all the time that we can't enforce. There's not a clear path to that, but I think this falls into that. And so I guess my question is, if this were to pass, and I don't know if it will, but should it even be in this space, or should it be its own subset?
And I think, obviously, it can remain in, as written, with both. It could also, since Section 4 here was previously removed, there could be a motion to amend to have the permit piece separated. That would be up to the body. But either way, the language, both the original language and the proposed language can remain if the body so chooses.
Thank you. I'll just signal that I feel the ask a year ago, when we went to the Planning Commission for ADUs, was to help us make this less restrictive, and I hear the consideration on the short-term rentals, and I believe that we have that considered with the way that our ordinance is written now. I'm not in favor of us adding more barriers to this. I was hoping that we were gonna be releasing some from this, so I won't be voting in favor of this amendment.
Counselor Stewart.
Thank you. The Mayor Pratim asked most of my questions, but I did wanna signal that when I made this request for council action to send this to the Planning Commission over a year ago, that was the intent, was to make sure that we were reducing barriers to one of the many elements of housing affordability, and one of the many things that we can do. So this was identified by the Planning Commission and folks in the community I talked to as a huge barrier. The deed restriction and the covenant is a huge barrier to being able to sell your home, which, then why would you build one if you don't know that you can sell it later? And then we just end up right in the same spot that we are. So I cannot support this amendment.
Counselor over.
Thank you, Mayor. This brings me back to the conversations we had over short-term rentals. We talked about those for a long time, and they were talking about those for a long time before I even came on council. And council totally came down onto the idea of owner occupied. And so I would say that we should do the same thing here. And as a secondary thought, they're called ADUs, for accessory is the word I key on. Accessory, to me, means a small thing, not two houses that are the same size. And so like, we talk about an ADU is a mother-in-law apartment, or a casita, or in my mind, it's always described as something small. And so what we're doing here seems to be opening up for two houses on the exact same lot. And so I like this idea a lot of just owner occupied. It's going to let anybody make a mother-in-law apartment, make a casita, even rent it out full-time, short-term rentals. But it's in line with what we did with short-term rentals, and so I like the idea.
Counselor Lo.
Thank you. I just wanted to briefly sort of acknowledge and say aloud, like, I think Counselor Ryan's amendment is very much in good faith. And I just wanna call out that I think he's very thoughtfully tried to sort of put back an owner occupied requirement without putting in place the deed restriction, which, as Commissioner Kolkmeier already mentioned, is a particularly onerous and unworkable part of the ordinance that I'm glad we're removing. So I think Counselor Ryan is offering this amendment with a view to try to put in place the owner occupancy requirement, but in a less restrictive way. That said, I'm gonna vote no on this amendment for two reasons. One, the fact that the state law will go into effect in one year, and I think would require us to revisit this in one year, is I appreciate the sort of the argument out there that you wanna keep these owner occupied, but given the fact that we're just gonna be back here revisiting this in a year, I guess, on balance, I don't know that this makes sense. The second point I just raised is, although this is absolutely offered in good faith, I'm a little worried, as the Mayor Pratim already referenced, about the enforcement. Specifically, I do think this opens up the door for folks to sort of, if they don't like that their neighbor has an ADU, make complaints that may not be in good faith, suggesting that the property isn't owner occupied, even if it is, or just raise questions about ADU. And I'm just worried that that could, it could open the door to sort of acrimony and folks targeting folks that have an ADU, which I just think could get a little bit messy and maybe worse. So I think, on balance, I'm gonna be a no vote on this amendment.
Counselor Sinks.
Counselor Lo stole my idea about coming back next year, which I don't really think we need to do, come back next year again and open up like, well, I thought we could do this or that. So I'm going to be a no vote as well, because I want us to just settle it and keep with the state law, which will go into effect next year. Thanks.
Counselor Ryan.
Thank you, and I appreciate all these thoughtful comments. I'll just tell you why I'm proposing this amendment in the first place. When the city council first sold this to the community, it was based on the idea of this is another tool, another mechanism to allow people to stay in their homes, whether they're trying to buy a home for the first time, or whether they're a senior citizen on a fixed income, a vet, or have any other reasons why they need additional income. And for that reason, I'm very much in favor of ADUs. And I do think they do provide that additional density and helps build a community, some of the things that the Planning Commission shared with us early on. What I don't see is that the owner occupancy piece addresses the density, addresses the community aspect of it. The argument that if you don't have an owner occupancy, gosh, well, now you'll have two places that people can rent instead of just one. Well, that's true if they're not living in Lakewood, if they're an out-of-towner, if they don't live in perhaps even Colorado. Now, we're really just talking about a rental situation. One of the things that Lakewood, I think, has found is we're really good about attracting developers who are willing to build places for folks to rent. We're really good about building, or attracting developers who wanna build million-dollar homes. We're not good in building that missing middle. A lot of these homes that we're talking about are not the million-dollar homes. They very well may end up being some of these million-dollar homes that we're talking about. But most of Lakewood does have some of these smaller housing stock that are still attainable. It may be a pipe dream for some, but it's still, there's a hope that someone might be able to achieve that at some point. If we're just turning this into an investment vehicle, and let's call it really what it is, because if we remove the owner occupancy piece, now this is really just an investment vehicle for me to rent out to somebody else if I happen to be the owner of this. And maybe that's what we want. Maybe we wanna remove homes that are owned by people and turn them into rentals. We're seeing folks in Ward 4 and in other parts of the city where they have bought a number of single-family homes that are owned by a company, and they're renting them out. I think this just provides an additional incentive to turn rental, single-family home ownership into rental properties. And maybe that's what the city council is looking for. My amendment is to say, let's put the brakes on that and hold off on it. As Counselor Lo and Counselor Stewart said, there are a number of obstacles that the proposal achieves, such as removing the covenants. And I'm very much in favor of removing those covenants. I don't understand why they were put there in the first place. And it does a number of other things to address that. To say that, well, gosh, the law is gonna change, so let's just do it now, I think really begs the question, because we're gonna be back here, as we heard from our city attorney and from others, that we're gonna have to revisit a number of different issues in the ordinance, because it's not compliant with what was passed at the legislature and signed by the governor. Whether the law changes or not, I doubt, but who knows? I'm willing to wait. I don't know that there's a rush for us on the owner occupancy piece to address it at this very moment, with the risk that we're gonna churn more single-family homes into, frankly, just investment vehicles. There's a few other points, and I'm happy to address them if folks have additional questions, but I think those are the larger pieces of what I'm looking at in terms of the amendment.
Were you done, Counselor? You said a few more points. You're done? Okay. All right. I will just vocally, so that the community...
I'm very sorry. You're right. I did have one other thing that someone brought up about the enforcement piece. I think the enforcement aspect, to say, well, gosh, it'd be awfully hard to enforce this, I think is a red herring, frankly. There is not a single ordinance that the city council can, has passed in the past, or will pass in the future, that doesn't frankly rely on frankly the folks following the law to the extent that they're aware of the law. We don't have folks watching over people's shoulders when it comes to barking dogs, to fences, to different disputes around code enforcement. But yet, we do pass ordinances on these things because we find that they're important. So I think the fact that there may be some issue about enforcement, I think frankly is a red herring, and is not a real argument, actually.
Thank you. I will be voting yes for our amendment tonight, and for many of the reasons that some of my counselors have already expressed. Yes, we only have a one-year runway on this, but for the time being, the community did show up with some significant concerns about short-term rentals and not being owner-occupied. So for the time being, personally, we'd feel more comfortable making sure that we are maintaining the sanctity of having this as a place that, you know, mom can move into, grandma can move into, or our young graduates could move into as well. So just wanted to voice that out. And with that, I believe we are ready for a vote on the amendment, just the amendment. So back to the motion that was made. The motion that was made was that we would be removing the strike out of that first line on Section 4, and of course, I can't find it now. So the ordinance would in fact read, "The owner of the property on which an accessory dwelling unit is located shall occupy either the primary or accessory dwelling." And then we are maintaining the permit for an ADU, I'm sorry, the sentence that reads, "A permit for an ADU shall only be issued to an owner occupant or their designee." Counselor Ryan, did I get that correct?
That's correct. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. So yes vote would be passing that. So with that, we'll go ahead and open up voting. And we have five and five.
In order for an action to pass, it must get a majority. A tie is not a majority.
Okay. So that fails, five to five, and the names being Mayat Guerrero, Stewart, Sharazai, Lo, and Sinks. Thank you, Counsel. Counselor Lo.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to offer another amendment. I move to amend Section 17.4.3.1, Pren-A, Pren-X, Pren-6, Pren-A, of Ordinance 24-12 to read as follows. "An accessory dwelling unit shall not exceed the greater of 1,400 square feet of gross floor area or the square footage of the gross floor area of the existing primary dwelling unit." And I'm happy to offer comments on that at the appropriate time.
Do we have a second?
Second.
And we'll open it up for discussion, starting with Counselor Mayat Guerrero, then Counselor Sinks. Sinks.
So I have thought about this concept, and I think that I have a bit of a concern, which is, I think that there are rare, but most likely in my ward cases, where there is sort of the largest possible lot with the largest, with like a large footprint main house, that has the potential to make a very large ADU. And again, given the statistics in that same study that I was referencing earlier, what I know is that it is most likely for people in like middle, high-middle class, all the way down to lower income if they are owners of their property, to use their ADUs for housing family and for long-term rentals, and that it is the few exceptions who do short-term rentals and above-market rate rentals, who are in that higher income and tax bracket. And so, again, even though those are like the very few properties that might be possible, I worry about that impact on particularly the neighborhood in Ward Two that has both our highest and lowest census tracts, income-wise, in the entire city, and the potential for that disparity to increase based on that. That said, I think that some of the intention, and I ask this of our amendment sponsor here, that I imagine that some of the intention is really to create flexibility. I think that Commissioner Kolkmeier, with the planning commission, spoke to this, which is, if somebody applies for something that's 1,405 feet, suddenly it's getting automatically denied. And I do wish to integrate some of that flexibility. So I wonder, if Counselor Lowe, you could speak a little bit to your intentionality there, and then if you're open and others, I would love other discussion from other members of the council on that concept too, because I think there might be an opportunity for us to build in some level of flexibility or being able to have some level of determination, like as long as it's close to that 1,400 intention. But I think if the true intention of the amendment is really just to be as flexible and as vast as possible, obviously that kind of language that I'm suggesting to just soften the boundary wouldn't do what you're intending.
Counselor Lowe.
Thank you, Counselor Mayor Guerrero. And no, I think that point is well-made and well-asked. Let me say this, just on the logic for the amendment. I mean, look, I think frankly, this is, we're a little bit sort of on the margins of some of the most important issue here. I think one of the most important things the amendment does is take, and Commissioner Kolkmeier already spoke to this, is take the existing 700 square footage cap, which is quite restrictive, and I think is one of the things, as Commissioner Kolkmeier already explained, that's fueling the problematic economics of ADUs. By doubling it, I think that does a lot of the work, and that point is very important, right? I looked up the median Colorado home size for a single-family home, or just the median home size in general for an owned home. And based on St. Louis Federal Reserve data, it's just over 2,000 square feet. It's, I think it's 2,025. It was 2,500 in 2016. It's actually inch down as housing affordability pressures have ramped up over the last six or seven years. So it's now just over 2,000. So I just want to be clear, right? Like, the intent here is absolutely, to your question, Counselor Mayor Guerrero, it's certainly not to allow folks to build a second McMansion, nor do I think realistically that in the vast majority of cases, that's what we're talking about. So I would be absolutely open to some sort of tweak to this, to make sure that that doesn't happen, if that's a concern. The amendment goes actually exactly to the point I heard you make earlier, Counselor Mayor Guerrero, which is, economics really matters here, right? Supply matters here. I really do think that increasing, you know, ADUs are really Colorado-oriented solution to this problem, right? It's a local, sort of decentralized way of allowing an individual homeowner to sort of increase gentle density on their plot of land, right? To allow a family member or to rent out a unit to someone that is looking for, you know, to downsize. But I do think that 1,400, you know, to Counselor Stewart's point, the original intent here was to be as unrestrictive as possible. Going up to 1,400 square feet is a meaningful improvement, but I think we could do more, given that the median square footage is still over 2,000 square feet. If it helped, if it helped garner six votes, I would be delighted to sort of, I don't know whether it'd be a tertiary amendment or re-offering the amendment, but something to the effect of, the greater of 1,400 square feet or the size of the primary square residence, but in no cases larger than 2,025 square feet, which is, again, the median size of a home, if that would address the concern. You know, if the goal here is to increase housing supply in Lakewood, in sort of plot by plot, recognizing all of the structural barriers that Commissioner Kolkmeier already referenced, I think we ought to go for as much supply as possible, you know, at the individual homeowner level. And given some of the economic barriers that tap fees are creating, I think allowing folks to go, you know, at least up to the median size of a home makes sense.
So do we want a friendly amendment?
I think that it sounds like Counselor Lowe and I may just be at a bit of odds on what we think the reasonable limit is, and that's fine and allowed. So I welcome other comments or questions about this amendment. And if it feels like there's lots of folks in a similar position as me, then I think we can work on that. But I don't know that we're, I don't think that we're in a position right now where that's like necessary. I would love to hear what others are thinking.
Counselor Sinks, and then Mayor Portam Sharazai.
Thank you. So if I understand it correctly, then the ADU could be equal to the square footage of the house, correct? Is that correct? Yes, yes.
Well, sorry.
I'm seeing a nod from Counselor Lowe, but...
There are restrictions, though, based on zoning, as Commissioner Kolkmeier had mentioned, as far as the size of the property, the size of the primary dwelling, and then in addition to that, the size of the new accessory dwelling. So there would still be limitations in place with those rules.
And if the ADU that was going to be built met those limitations, then it could be equal in size to the main dwelling.
Correct.
I believe so. Yes, so if the ADU, under the proposed amendment, if the ADU met all the other dimensional and design standards that it must meet under the zoning code, it could be the same size as the primary structure under this proposed amendment. Obviously, we all know, you would have to obviously have a larger parcel of land to make that happen in many cases, but it is possible.
So if it did happen, it was possible, it almost seems like a workaround from getting your property subdivided to go through a subdivision to...
It still wouldn't be subject to the subdivision ordinance or Title 16, but it would allow for, you know, potentially a much larger ADU, if it was a standalone ADU.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor Portam.
Yes, thank you. Counselor Lowe, thank you, and thank you for staying awake for this. We really appreciate that. I just would, I would vote in favor of this amendment for the reasons that were just articulated. There are still restrictions on setbacks and all the various zoning amendments. And then we've heard members of council up here tonight speak not in favor of rentals, and I'm assuming that was directed towards more apartments coming in. And in my opinion, if we're getting a 2,000-square-foot second unit, then this is meeting a need for an additional, what could be considered a single-family home. And so I do think that while I am supportive of housing in any type, whether it's homeownership or rental, that another sizable option on a lot that meets all the requirements would be favorable because all housing is favorable right now, whether you're renting it or owning it. So I would vote in favor of this amendment as it stands now.
Counselor Olver.
Yeah, I think 1,400 is too big to begin with. But I did have a question, a simple one, really. Is there a limit to the number of ADUs you could have on a lot? It's in there? I didn't find it. Okay, that's a good thing. But that, with this, you could now have two houses, if you have a big enough lot, you could have two McMansions with this amendment. Yeah, because you could have, and then you can rent them both out. And so I don't love that idea at all. I mean, we're, if zoning works for, no, I don't like this amendment. I'll have to vote no.
I need a little clarification here. I thought we were talking about maximum of 1,400 square feet. I know the comment came up about potentially upwards of 2,000 square feet. We don't have a motion on the floor for 2,000 square feet, to my understanding. We're still looking at 14. Is that correct?
Yeah. Yes, the amendment, as I understand it, Mayor, is that it would read, "An accessory dwelling unit shall not exceed the greater of 1,400 square feet of gross floor area or the square footage of the gross floor area of the existing primary dwelling unit." So it could be as much as 2,000 square feet. It could be, you know, I guess if you had a very large home on a very large parcel, it could be even greater than 2,000 square feet, depending on what the gross floor area is.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Counsel, so we have an amendment on the floor. It has been seconded. We are ready, then, for the vote. And that fails. Four yeses, six nays, the nays being Strom, Olver, Mayor Guerrero, Ryan, Nyström, and Sinks. Okay, so we do have our primary motion on the floor and seconded. So then we move forward with our vote. Well, it wouldn't even be as amended, because neither of the amendments passed, correct? Okay, so we're looking at the original motion made for item number 13. Counsel, please cast your votes. Okay, and that passes eight yeses, two nays, the nays being Olver and Nyström. Did that not show up? Do we need to vote again, so they see it? It did not, yep. Okay. Everybody, please vote again. Passes eight yeses, two nays, the nays being Olver and Nyström. Okay. This is the point in the evening where we open up general public comments. So anyone here to address the city council on matters that did not have, land on the agenda this evening, will be given the opportunity. Again, Lakewood Speaks is still open this evening for anyone that might want to submit comments there. They are also part of the public record. Speakers here in chambers should limit their comments to three minutes, please. I have a list up here, and it looks like we probably have a list down there. So with that, when you come up, please state your name and address, or name and word, ward. And I would also ask that we refrain from any audible clapping noises, things like that. Let's be respectful of the speakers that are up here. Make sure everybody can hear everything. And any handouts that you have, please leave them with our assistant, city clerk, this evening, and she'll make sure to get those distributed to city council. So with that, I will go ahead and start calling names. And if anyone has not signed up, we still have a sheet down here where you can do so as we move forward this evening. And Mr. Mace, you are up first.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Counsel. James Mace, Ward One. I'm up here tonight, again, to let you guys know, Belmar, the elevators are falling apart. I have called in numerous times, and I have some pictures, if you guys would like to see them, on one of the elevators, because, bottom line, I'm seeing trash, urination, all over the elevators. Every single elevator in the city of Lakewood, practically, especially at the Widesworth Light Rail Station, and all over our city. Not only am I seeing it, but I see it in the elevator going to the garage constantly, and I'm tired of it. And I'm asking Counsel to do something, because, you know, public does not want to use these elevators. It throws feces all over them. So please, take a look at it and do something. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mace. Then we have Patrick Fox, and then Connie Reddick. You can, yes, right here in the middle. And if you'll start us off with your name and address, or name and ward, and you'll, we'll start the clock for three minutes.
Our name is Patrick Fox, and I believe I'm in Ward Three. I am homeless currently. I am the one who is hauling the wagon around town. I am coming to a die because I'm being attacked by your community on several levels, on aspects of coming out of abuse, and a dead daughter, and a wife that was treated like a dog. Do you understand this? I have complained to the police several times with no avail under their aspects of help. I've seen the gangs in your community who actually do damage the porta-potties and, you know, cause issues for everyone else. I have been homeless for 12 years and six months. No help with you all because you've been debating on these aspects. Mind you, no help for me from the cops because they don't let me sleep anywhere. You understand, I'm running on a kind of run battery. I do have an apartment. I would claim that I am the one person in your community who's done it right, and this is how you treat people. I got people who are twice my age lying to the cops and hitting me with their trucks on Memorial Day. That's what's living in your community. You understand? I got people just like you, in normal-day folks, who are lying on these aspects and causing the issues, making me worse in the end of the day, because I'm trying to get an apartment. I got one. But I'm also being attacked by their kids. I'm also witnessing their kids doing public relations at the park that I'm not allowed to sleep at, but they're allowed to go there in the middle of night and fornicate. To the stuff that James has mentioned about the elevators, those people don't care about you. I want you to understand that. And if they were here now, which they don't even have the courtesy, because they're on drugs 90% of the time, they'd tell you the same. They would crash you under the bus, and they wouldn't think twice, like they do to me every night. You know how many times I get asked for blues in your community? Almost every day. Crime in criminals here is just going to get worse as it goes on. I have been traveling the country... I have been traveling the country and I have told these citizens to many city councils. They laughed at me, too. These situations will not get solved because the aspects of it, we chose an aspect of corruption out the better good of helping other people like me, who is disabled, who has given a lot to their community, watching it crumble in between their fingers. There's stuff we didn't build, mind you. None of us have gone to war to fight for these aspects yet, we're just letting it go away. And on the housing issues, not to be me. I've been waiting for years to get just a home. And you guys are baiting on basic stuff that I don't got yet. You see my point? This is why it's here today. Because I don't have a home and you've all been sitting baiting and I've, what, twelve years, six months? My trial's almost up, but at least I did it. You know? I could have been just liking everyone else and did drugs and turned my way from the community that's been disrespectful to me and hit me with a truck the other day, right? But I'm turning the other cheek. I'm just bringing this to your attention. This is what I see out of all of your communities. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Ms. Reddick? And then Shelby Fuchs? And then Charles Hendricks?
I am Connie Reddick from Ward Three. And I'll start this out with, I actually was an activist for Colorado Land. And they would be outraged. I have been in all accessory pride parades and have been an advocate for the LBTQ community. And if they knew how you were treating me, disrespectful and not giving me the same rights equality like everyone else in housing, and also the fact that I have been threatened by me dancing in my wheelchair, or how can I be disabled? Well, my doctor thinks it's very healthy for me to get exercise. And when you disrespect people with disabilities, which you do all the time, because you don't know me, you don't know what kind of things I have done for the community. I've been an activist since I was seventeen years old, and I helped pass a lot of laws, and especially for equality for all. And when people see the things that you are doing illegally in this community and have been disrespectful, and especially you, Rebecca Stewart, lying about caring about housing, lying and using somebody else's wording for the community about health, about mental issues, about housing, well, I don't see you helping anybody. I'm one person. If you can't help me, how can you help anybody else and become state representative? I'm asking everybody not to vote for you, and I'm asking for this City Council to be more respectful to people with disabilities. Also, when you make these trails or anything else, you never think about anybody with disabilities. We have the same rights as everybody else, and just because we're in a wheelchair doesn't mean that we haven't done a lot more to support the community. I was born here. Yous are all very young, and my family has paid taxes. I'm also indigenous, black, and Latino woman, and we have seen all the racism that has been going on, even when I came here. My husband was military. And what happens? I go to the police department, report that my property has been stolen. I went to the police department a couple of weeks ago and reported that my person that, because they changed them so much, that was hired on to watch our building, went into my apartment unlawfully, and I couldn't even get a report from the police department. So I would like you to see what's going on with the police department and do something about it, because I deserve the same respect as everybody else. Thank you.
Thank you. Shelley Fuchs, then Charles Hendricks, then Fareed Amin.
Good evening, counsel. My name is Shelby Fuchs. I'm a resident here at One Belmar Place. I am also an early childhood educator here in Jefferson County. I care greatly about every child's undeniable rights to education, a peaceful childhood, and their right to live. I'm here to ask that you pass a local resolution calling for a lasting, permanent ceasefire on Palestine. It is horrifying that I have to be here to report that since October seventh, over fifteen thousand children have been killed and tens of thousands more have been injured, not including the thousands that are still trapped under rubble. In Gaza, children have spent their entire lives under a ruling class that controls every, every, every aspect of their society. Growing up during the siege of your home and amidst reoccurring escalations of violence and wars is detrimental, as these children have already experienced countless tragedies in their lifetimes, as well as the COVID-19 pandemic, all of which have dramatically affected their education. Devastatingly but unsurprisingly, over one million children in Palestine are reported to desperately need immediate psychiatric care. I've had the blessing to meet and become friends with many Palestinian families here in our community who have family, parents, siblings, nieces, nephews, and even their own children trapped or martyred in the occupied Palestine. And I've never seen strength such as that these people hold, standing strong in the face of true fear for your children. I am ashamed to say that it took the permanent closure of the schools in Gaza to encourage me to step into my inherent responsibility as a role and role as an educator to do everything I can to protect these children. But I feel very strongly that this is a challenge of our community. This is an abandonment of morality. This is an abomination that the United States not only supports, but carries out the occupation of Palestine and the brutal murder of thousands of children. Glory to, glory to them. Pass a local resolution calling for a lasting, permanent ceasefire on Palestine and land back. Thank you.
Thank you. Charles? You pick your mic.
Okay.
Name and address or name and ward, please.
Good evening, counsel. My name is Charles Hendricks. I live in Lakewood. I'm not too sure about wards. But I'm a junior at MSU Dunbar studying psychology, and I'm also a United States Marine Corps Vet and was honorably discharged in 2020. I was an infantryman, so I completed two tours with the Marines, and I've been all over the world. And I have to say that the actions of Israel and the war crimes committed go against everything I've ever learned or stood for. Israel's war crimes have been thrown on the big screen, so to speak, because of social media and the access of information in this digital age. And I have to say, it is disgusting to watch as they actively commit a genocide. Women and children and noncombatants are dying by the dozens, and the cruel nature of these killings is abhorrent. Furthermore, collective punishment goes against international law and rules of warfare as defined within the Geneva Conventions. And Israel's repeated international violations and war crimes of collective punishment have created a dire humanitarian crisis for over 2.3 million Palestinians in Gaza. To date, eighty-five congress members support a ceasefire, and it is reported that sixty-seven percent of Americans support a lasting ceasefire and an end to USAID to Israel. The enormous and unconditional military aid provided to Israel by the United States every year ultimately deprives Americans of money for their own urgent local needs. With Lakewood residents, federal taxes contributing $2.4 million to Israel's genocide, which could instead fund, for example, 294 households with public housing for a year, 860 children receiving free or low-cost health care, 27 elementary school teacher salaries are paid for, or cancel student loan debt for 65 graduates. I'm glad we have the freedom to stand before a local government in this manner because so many other nations do not have that right currently. Freedoms we don't even think about because they've always existed as Americans, but being blissfully ignorant about civil rights and liberties being taken away all over the world should make you stir in your seat. I'm calling for you to pass a local resolution for a permanent ceasefire in Palestine and land back to the people. Thank you.
Thank you. Fareed Amin and then Aisha Amin? And then Axie Carter? I mispronounced that. Annie?
Good evening, distinguished members of the council. My name is Fareed Amin. I live in Lakewood. I'm here to kindly ask you to ask, to call for a ceasefire, a permanent one. It has been 247 days since this genocide has been going on, though some may not believe that it is a genocide. The Palestinians lost everything. I'm not sure what the number, the current number of debt is. It could be over 45,000. But due to the, due to the bodies that are burned, decapitated, maimed, indecomposed, beyond recognition, as well as the, as well as those that are missing under the rubble, the real confirmed death toll is now about 200,000, over 200,000. If you look at Gaza and other towns, you know what it is, what it looks like. It looks like rubble, nothing else. But Israel and its most immoral army is after Hamas. If you bring this issue up and talk to people, those who support this genocide, they tell you it's Hamas, it's Hamas, it's Hamas. Okay, if it is Hamas, why the Palestinians are dehumanized? Why are they demonized? Why are they called human animals? Are they human animals? When I researched, I realized that their literacy rate, the Palestinians' literacy rate, it is at ninety-seven percent versus the Israelis', which is at eighty-seven, I believe, if I'm not wrong. So one of the ministers of Israel called them a creation. What does these words mean? It means we're after your land. We kill you because you do not belong in this world. You are lower than us. We get your land. And that's why you see some real estate agents already trying to advertise some properties that are going to be built. And you know, some politicians even talk about that. The Palestinians themselves, though they do not have anything, they record their own demise on their videos, on their cameras, sorry. It is because Israel does not allow any reporters to go and report anything. They attack everything. On September, sorry, November of 2003 last year, over hundred IDF, so IDF doctors signed a petition in which they said the hospitals should be bombed and destroyed. And the reason is because they do not want resistance in Palestine to, to resist, to save their country. And because of that, if Hitler lived today, he would have been ashamed and would have stopped this genocide because the Palestinians are recording their own demise, because no reporters are allowed to report anything.
Your time is up.
I am sorry for this. And I hope you call for a permanent ceasefire. Thank you so much.
Aisha Amin? Annie Carter, and then Sandy Weathers.
Hello, my name is Aisha Amin, and I'm thirteen years old. Today I'm here to call on the Lakewood City Council, Council to call for a permanent ceasefire in Gaza. Today I'm here talking about the Nusirat massacre. The Israelis tried to do a rescue mission to get back some hostages, but instead killed 274 Palestinians, including 64 kids and three of their own hostages. They disguised as humanitarian aid trucks to get in. So this means that 274 Palestinians were massacred for the rescue of four hostages. I will never forget the day that I woke up and opened Instagram to see a beheaded baby on my screen. When I saw this image, I remember getting goosebumps everywhere. This baby was only one and a half years old. Now imagine if that was your sweet innocent baby that got beheaded. How would you feel? And that was not the only one that got beheaded. There were many more. Fire will never cease in Palestine until Palestine is free. Permanent ceasefire now. Thank you.
Thank you.
So it's Arnie Carter.
Arnie, thank you.
And I'm in Ward Three, just like five minutes away from here. And I'm gonna be brief here. I know if any of you guys, any of you people walked by a fire, a house that was on fire, and you knew children were in there, you would do your humanitarian duty to do anything you could to save those children. Gaza is on fire. Children are being killed, they're being burned, they're being starved, they're being orphaned, they're being traumatized. Do, please do your humanitarian duty and call for a permanent ceasefire.
Thank you. Sandy Weathers, then Amber Varwick, and then Hunter Montoya.
In April, I testified before you detailing my difficulty in getting an audience with our Congresswoman regarding the ongoing genocide in Gaza. I would like to begin by thanking Counselor Sherzai for helping my friends and I with this request. I want to provide you with a quick update on what has transpired since then. I'm happy to report that we have been able to have two conversations with Congresswoman Pedersen, one via Zoom and one in person. Please know that my friends and I did everything we could to prepare to make the most of this opportunity. We were very thoughtful with our words and our intentions, and we provided excellent testimony, including from Aisha, who talked about the trauma being inflicted on children. We had a Holocaust survivor speak as well. He cried in front of the Congresswoman. And despite that, despite our best effort, the Congresswoman remained unsuayed. We did not receive a single concession. This is what we asked for. End to all military aid to Israel. A public and official statement for a ceasefire. Restore unrefunding. Stop accepting AIPAC donations. We are here today because we made zero progress with Brittany. So I come to you again, begging you to put forward a ceasefire resolution. When I was here last time, I pointed out my concern that loyalty to Brittany was at play. Last night, our Congresswoman held her campaign kickoff party. It is my utter disappointment to report that half of our council members attended this party. I'm not going to name names. You guys know who you are. But there was a representative from each ward at this party. So when you attend a candidate's campaign party, you're demonstrating support. You're saying, I like this person and I support what they're doing. In Brittany's case, you're saying, I support her unwavering support to Israel, including the billions of dollars of military aid that is being used to commit a genocide. We are not asking for bike lanes or for you guys to fix the affordable housing crisis. We are asking you to recognize our government's role in this genocide, and we are asking you to make a public statement calling for it to stop. In my closing, I want to quote Councilwoman Stewart. She said once, "You aren't going to get everything you want." And that statement does resonate with me because I get it. I've been involved in politics a long time. I understand. However, this ask is small, and it has the potential to save lives. I don't understand why you refuse to do it, and we're going to continue coming because this is what we have. This is our space to speak. Like I said, it's hard to speak with a Congresswoman. We could speak with you easily. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Amber Varwick, Ward Two. I want to go back to the very beginning of the meeting. Can we go back to the very beginning of the meeting for a second? Because we were making a proclamation about Pride Month and some things were said that I would just like to remind us of, if we could do that for a moment. I believe the exact words, and you may have written it. Mayor Strom, I'm not sure I know that Matt Guerrero was the one who said it. People hold infinite dignity and value. We've also talked about pursuing happiness. And see, that's what I'm doing. I live in America. I'm super lucky. I'm here, and if somebody was dropping bombs on me, there'd probably be a different response, right? Because I have that entitlement, if you will, right? I, I have my First Amendment right and I'm standing here and I'm doing this, but there are people that are literally dying right now that would love to talk to you, but they're pretty far away and bleeding to death, so they can't. Brittany Pedersen has absolutely zero interest in representing anything but herself, and that is my particular take on it. Because she informed us that during these meetings, that none of the money that she takes could ever influence her vote. But she started that statement with, she joined Congress without having any knowledge of foreign experience, seemed proud of it actually, in a weird way. So in other words, I don't have the knowledge to back myself here, but I'm going to. Hmm, wonder if that AIPAC money has anything to do with it. And, you know, I can't talk to her. Nobody can. She won't let us. She kicks us out of places that she's going to be before we can say or do anything. And that's fine. That's fine. Because city council is our analog for DC. You know what I mean? Like the founders, when they created a government buy-in for the people, they intended for us to come to you today and talk about this, or tap fees, or whatever. We're doing this, though, because it's been, it's been suggested that this is not the correct venue. I argue it is, because this is the only venue we have. No one else is according us or affording us what I feel is our rights, but that's irrelevant. They, they're not going to listen. And the thing about ceasefire is it is a symbol. But symbols, symbols are symbolic of progress. They are symbolic of hope. And I have hope for all of us that we can see that genocide is wrong, because I don't think anybody here is arguing that it's not. It's, it's at a third of all American Jews see this as a genocide. Most non-Jews see this as a genocide. This isn't even a controversial issue. So my question is, not will you call for ceasefire, but I want you to look inside yourselves and ask yourselves why you won't. Because if I said I wanted to go throw a brick at a child, you would tell me not to do that. If I said I was gonna go kill a pregnant woman, you'd say, Amber, are you all right? If I said I'm gonna kill granddad, you'd be like, what's wrong with you? But we're doing that every day with our tax money. And you need to recognize that you play as much a part of that as I do, in that we don't have a choice. But we do, we can speak up, we can be loud. We can say, I don't agree! And I urge you to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Varwick. Hunter Montoya, and then Ms. Fiore, the list is yours.
Is this the one?
Yes.
Hi, I'm, uh, Dr. Hunter Montoya. I believe I live in Ward Five. I'm here today as a white, American, nonreligious man, and I name these things because perhaps similarly to yourselves, I do have the privilege of averting my eyes and my heart from this genocide without paying immediate social, emotional, material costs. But our history and our laws of physics are very clear in that my doing so and your doing so directly imparts those costs inescapably onto our brothers, our sisters, and our siblings. It imparts those costs onto those who have appeared before you in this room, to those across this community, to those across our nation, and without a doubt, to those upon whom we inflict violence, state-sanctioned terrorism, and imperialist exploitation from Palestine to the Democratic Republic of the Congo. Individualism is and has always been entirely illusory. Not a single one of the rights or comforts we enjoy today was achieved without the collective courage and martyrdom of those who have dedicated themselves to humanity and who have understood that our responsibility to each other, not to be a burden, but to be truly precious and to be perhaps the only thing that truly matters. And so what we're requesting of you is nothing more than moral courage. As I expressed to you five months ago, I recognize that this kind of courage is not fostered in our culture, and yet that is what our responsibility to each other necessitates. It takes courage to open your heart, to invest your energy into humanity, and most certainly when your peers, your family, and your employers do not understand, do not care, and do not care to understand. It takes courage to do uncomfortable things when you have the privilege of comfort and distraction. I think it's important to note as well that you are not being asked to choose between your moral courage and your careers. To choose one is to choose the other. As I imagine you've witnessed both domestically and internationally, this is not a political issue that is going to blow over or simply pass. The sheer violence of this genocide and the measurable complicity of the state of Colorado, let alone the United States, is far too well documented to ever be undone. Over eight months straight of daily, high-definition footage of international war crimes, globally televised testimony in the International Courts of Justice, growing evidence documented every single day, all of which substantiate a truth that the United States government and legacy media seek to suppress, but that has been irreversibly consumed by millions of Americans and billions across the globe. History is only going one way here, as we bear active responsibility for a Holocaust. And evidence shows as well that those who speak out with courage and moral consistency enjoy more career security and community support than those who try to avoid this confrontation with reality. There's no eventuality here in which what we are asking is not in your own best interest, despite the threats of fearmongers, big campaign donors, lobbyists, and corporate interests. Preserving your comfort in the present merely serves to kick the can down the road, and your careers will pay the price with interest as your silence continues to be documented in collusion with violence. Speak up. Free Palestine. Thank you.
Next, we have Bradley Bruce, followed by Sarah Napier.
Okay. I will start by saying, since October, almost 36,000 Palestinians have been murdered in Gaza by the, by Israel's genocidal military campaign. That is not why I'm here today. I want to tell you about a specific attack that occurred on Friday, May 25th, just a little over two weeks ago. That evening, Israel bombed the Kuwaiti Al-Sayyim Refugee Camp. This resulted in the extrajudicial murder of 45 people and the wounding of over 240 others. I'd like to point out that this attack occurred just hours after the International Court of Justice ordered Israel to cease its military operations in Rafah, where the refugee camp is located. The following day, The New York Times published an article presenting evidence that shows the weapons Israel used in that bombing were built in part by Woodward, an aerospace company headquartered in Fort Collins. A quote from that New York Times article, "The munition fragments found are marked by a series of numbers beginning with the unique identifier code assigned by the US government to Woodward, an aerospace manufacturer based in Colorado. There is no justification for the murder of civilians in a refugee camp, especially the weapons manufactured in Colorado. Not only are they manufactured here, but Woodward has received millions of dollars in both federal and state subsidies, including parer retirement funds. Are none of you upset that you have constituents sleeping on the streets while the state and federal governments send millions to build bombs to blow up people on the other side of the planet? I urge you to help us stop this. The city council has continuously told us that they will not weigh on, weigh in on international issues, but Woodward's headquarters and testing grounds are both less than 60 miles from Lakewood, just an hour's drive from here. This is a local issue. Please consider passing a resolution condemning Israel for the use of weapons built in Colorado to murder women and children, and also for a permanent and lasting ceasefire." One final thought, back to the bombing of 45 people. Right now, there are less than that, there are less people than that in this room right now. But if a foreign occupying army dropped a bomb from an airplane and killed every person in this room, it would be headline news for months, if not years. The Palestinians do not have that privilege, and you can do something about it. So I urge you to do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sarah Napier. And next, Lynda Amin-Bodwin.
Hello. I have spoken before, you guys, before. And last time, you said that you guys cared. You cared. You cared about people dying and that you were gonna do something about it. Well, you haven't. So here we are again. This past weekend, I had the honor to stand next to 100,000 other morally conscious people to draw the red line and call out Biden's hypocrisy, where we held a People's Court, where we tried Biden and Netanyahu for committing genocide, acts against humanity, and ethic cleansing. I urge you to look that up with the Palestinian youth movement. There is documentation. Biden stated that the invasion of Rafah would be his red line, but we all know that is a lie. Women, children, and men, all who are civilians, were murdered in their tents, which is a war crime. He again said that there would be no boots on the ground, AKA, American soldiers would not be involved. Again, he lied. On June 8th, American soldiers hid in an aid track, aid truck, using their peer that they said was created to deliver aid. But no, they went in and slaughtered over 275 people. So I'm asking you today, what is your red line? Because every atrocity known to humanity has been committed by Israel. I know you're going to, today is going to say that this is not a local issue, but it is. I will restate what my other people have said. The missiles that were used in Rafah massacre were manufactured in Colorado. Lockheed Martin, Boeing, all have places here where they are manufacturing missiles to carpet bomb civilians in Palestine. Again, I know you can't stop this genocide. Honestly, sometimes I feel like I don't know what will. But you can make a moral statement that you denounced the United States' involvement in these war crimes. You can also divest from Israel. Two other cities in the United States has done so. Right? You can hit them where it hurts by choosing to stop financing Israel's and United States' genocidal campaign. I'm urging you to do as much as you can. Because you have a moral obligation, obligation, you have a moral thing to do, sorry. It's late. Again, this money could be used to help homelessness, the migrant displacement, supporting the education in local businesses. This is literal blood money that is being sucked out of Lakewood to use and commit crimes against humanity. I'm also urging you to hold your politicians and Congresspeople accountable. The fact that they can be bought by AIPAC, an organization aligned in the eradication of the Palestinian people, is absurd. That's it. Please do everything in your power. This is your job. You're supposed to listen to the people. These are the people. We are speaking, and we will hold you accountable because we are the red line. We are the moral conscious of these, of the United States. And if you will not have the moral courage to do so, then we will do everything in our power to stop the United States from committing war crime after war crime after war crime.
Good evening, everyone. You could probably hear it in my voice and just see it in the way I feel and look right now. I'm extremely exhausted as a Palestinian. It's been more than eight months. But I don't have time to grieve or to cry. People are going away for their summer breaks right now. To see their family members and their loved ones. And I don't have the opportunity to do that. It's not an option for me to sit back and do nothing. I don't have an opportunity to go see my loved ones right now in Palestine. I don't have the chance to go to my village. I was supposed to be there two weeks ago with my boys. And that is not going to happen. I have to watch this from afar, which tears me up literally every day, every moment of every single day. Again, I don't have an option to sit back and do nothing. And the same should be for each and every one of you. I'm being told on a daily basis that my people don't matter, that it's okay for them to be slaughtered in ways that are unspeakable. More than eight months later, we come before you. As much as I have, I'm grateful to be in this space with my beautiful friends behind me, who are amazing, and I didn't see any other option but to speak tonight, even though I am exhausted, because of all the amazing work that they continue to do. And they show up every single day for me and other Palestinians. I cannot thank you guys enough. I love you all. I have to sit and watch our House pass a resolution to condemn the ICC prosecutor's filing of an arrest warrant for Netanyahu. Do you understand how painful and absurd all of this is at the same time? To know how complicit we are and how close it comes to affecting us on a local basis? If I could just get a few more seconds, I'd appreciate it. I came today from advocating for my son and other children who have special needs. I sat with a number of doctors at Children's Hospital doing so, because that is what we're supposed to do. Then I went on to meet with, just if you could please give me a second.
I'm sorry. I've gotta be fair to everybody. I'm sorry.
I appreciate it. Thank you. Just please advocate and call for a ceasefire and an end to the occupation.
Thank you. Okay. All right. Thank you all. We have nothing in general business this evening, I believe. Did we have one thing? Nope. Okay. We're moving all over. Then to the executive report to be given this evening by our deputy city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Just two quick items for you all. The first item, just to confirm for all city council and the community, the meeting that was previously scheduled for June 14th, the joint meeting with Jeffco Public Schools, with their school board, was postponed at the request of Jeffco Public Schools to find a time that worked better for their board. We understand that they're looking at different times, and hopefully they'll get back to the city with a time that works for them. We anticipate that probably late summer, early fall, but haven't had any specific times shared by the schools regarding that meeting. The second item is an ask of city council. There was some interest expressed in doing a tour of the Slash facility at Tin Cup, and I wanted to see if the mayor was willing to maybe do a quick poll to see what kind of interest city council had in that, so that we could look at the calendar and maybe get that scheduled this summer. And that's it.
Sure. All right. Thumbs up if you want a tour of the Slash site. Looks like we want a tour of the Slash site.
Thank you, Mayor.
That's it? Okay. All right. Thank you so much. And we'll move on to council reports. Oh, Ward One, Ward Five. Where do we start tonight? How about Ward Five?
He's ready. We're grabbing our rights.
No, please. You've been called, go.
I don't have anything really to report. Just want to thank everyone who took the opportunity to come out, sharing your, you know, expressing yourself, sharing your concerns, and making the ask that you're asking for us to take. I will just point out, I did listen to you. I will just point out, I did listen to you all at the last meeting. I took the opportunity to sign onto a letter that was sent to me. And I would support a resolution if we had the votes for it. So I would just put that out there. And really, that's all I have to share. So thanks for coming out. Thanks for advocating. I think it's, you know, it's a powerful thing when people continue to push and push and advocate over and over. So, thanks.
Okay. I agree with Council Abraer. I definitely think what's going on is horrendous. It is a war crime. And I stand with you on that. As a Marine Corps veteran, I understand what war crimes are, and these are atrocities. And I respect you all for your persistence and your diligence. In terms of the ward report, we will be having a coffee get-together the week of the 24th. More details to come on that in terms of the time and the location. Also, I wanted to encourage people, there is a Garden in the Box opportunity coming from Resource Central, which will start on June 10th with an eye towards conserving water. There's a discount available on those boxes and you can start ordering those on June 10th. Again, putting in plants that, from a zero-scape perspective, help reduce our water consumption and makes a big difference. There's also the Bike to Work Day coming up. Whether you work from home or just to get around town, consider trying riding a bike. Again, to reduce emissions in your carbon footprint. And I'd like to encourage different neighborhoods. I've already started talking to some folks in neighborhoods in Ward 5 about engaging in some of the opportunities the city provides in terms of a discount to, or a grant to enhance something in your neighborhood or fund a neighborhood get-together. There's also an opportunity to create a sustainable neighborhood. And I think that's a very particular effort that is needed. And again, I'm going to be reaching out and trying to encourage people to take advantage of that. And I just wanted to clarify my comments on rental properties and to echo Council Rhine's comments. We have a, we're missing the mark here. We're creating an environment where we have 30% of people's income going towards rental properties. I would like to see that decrease. I would like to see more opportunities for homeownership. I'm not opposed to rentals, but I am very much in favor of increasing homeownership in Lakewood. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone who came out tonight to share your opinions. It's always very difficult, I know, to stand up in a public forum, so I very much appreciate the comments. I also appreciate the folks who showed up at the Ward 4 meeting and shared a lot of their insights about a number of things that are before us, including the ADUs. And, you know, it didn't quite go the way the folks were advocating, but that's, you know, the fact that people reached out and shared their opinions in a civil way, I think was extremely helpful for me. There's a meeting coming up Wednesday, June 12th, at 5:30 to 7:00 at Red Rocks Community College. It's going to be, the school board is going to talk about the closing of, well, it's already closed, but the Glen and Heights disposition, the sale of the property, what to do with it. Whether they'll have a dialogue or whether it'll just be, here's information about it, I don't know. But if this is interesting to you, or it's of interest to you or your community, I suggest that it would be good to churn out in person. They have a virtual option as well. Unfortunately, there was another meeting tonight. Can't be in two places at once, of course. But do take a look at that. If there's a school that's been closed in your community, do look to see when those community meetings are and show up if that's of interest to you.
Okay. As most of you all know, the ballots have hit the mail, or have hit your house. And I just wanted to put in a plug for independents. I have my ballots here and I get, since I am an independent, I get a Republican ballot and I get a Democratic ballot. And I get to choose, as all independents do, which one I want to vote on and the other one I throw away. So if you want more choices, you could register as an independent. Unfortunately, this time, there's a grand total of one race on either ballot. It's on the Democratic side this time. So I'm afraid that's, our primary system is not the best in the world. People just don't want to run against incumbents, and I hardly blame them. One race out of two ballots doesn't seem like we have an awful lot of choices. Thank you very much.
Ward 3.
I think we may have lost Counselor Lowe. Oh, no. There he is. Thank you, Counselor Neistrom, for highlighting the Garden in a Box program. I was going to do that, so I will just retweet that. Did want to thank staff, especially Mike Whitaker, for coming and joining Counselor Lowe and myself last month at our ward meeting. It was excellent. We, I know, have had several pretty tragic speeding-related accidents in Ward 3. And so brought him out to speak to the community kind of about the traffic enforcement that we've been talking about moving forward within the community. And I think a lot of folks had the opportunity to get a lot of their questions answered by someone who knows a heck of a lot more than Counselor Lowe and I about this subject. So really, really appreciative of that collaboration. And then wanted to highlight that on June 15th, which is coming up, Belmar is having our Street Fest in downtown Lakewood. There will be music vendors from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m.
Nothing to add to Counselor Stewart's report. It's a little late where I am, so I'll leave it there rather than say something incoherent. But thank you all.
Thank you, Counselor Lowe. Ward 2.
Thank you. I think I've spoken at relative length to the issues that a lot of our public comments about the conflict and the egregious nature and one-sidedness of the violence that is happening in Palestine. And I've also signed onto letters and done some things outside of these chambers in this particular role, so I will leave it alone for this moment. But I think, I hope that you all know that I'm very available for conversation outside of this, on this issue or any, so don't ever be shy about that. And in particular, don't be shy about that this month of June because my wardmate, Counselor Cruz, as she has said a couple of times, is actually out of the country for the entire month of June. She is working on a master's program, which is incredible. So to be clear, she has a day job. That is how she pays for her housing. And then she has this job as her second job, and then she is also a master's student. And so in that extended education, which is fabulous and will serve her well in this role, she is able to do a study abroad program for the month of June, which is really excellent. But to be able to sustain connection in Lakewood while abroad, given the time change that we were just witnessing with Counselor Lowe, and they're in different places, but related time differences, it would be very, very difficult, if not impossible, to be able to fully govern and be present effectively at the same time. And so she is mostly taking off. My understanding is that she's working to be able to be semi-responsive to urgent issues. But in general, that means that I am who you have for June. So please make sure that you email me, you call me, you text me, you do whatever you need to in order to ensure that you're still being heard, even though you only have one counselor for a couple of weeks. And also, we will not be having a ward meeting this month for the same reason. But in July, on July 20th, we already have pedestrian infrastructure and bicycles as our key conversation there, and really want to encourage everybody to show up. We always leave time for some off-topic conversation as well at the Clement Center, 2:30 p.m. on a Saturday, July 20th. This last First Friday was, as folks probably know, was the 40 West, I believe, third official Pride-themed First Friday, which is really exciting. This is today our third City of Lakewood Pride proclamation. The second time that the Pride colors have ever joined our other flags in the chambers. And the first time that we had this proclamation, I believe I was the only out LGBTQ member on the bench. And now we have several. And that's an incredible amount of progress in a very small amount of time. And so I just, I say all of that because it's something that feels relatively straightforward and easy, but in fact was something that still had to be done in 2021, 2022, when several of us were newly elected. And so this kind of progress is possible, and it's due to community engagement and support. And I just, I want to say that that is a theme that we see in terms of progress here in Lakewood, the ability of local government to help with these national discussions. This is a little out of order, which is that the HPC, the Housing Policy Commission, is having, which I'm the chair of, normally I do study session reports where I talk about the committees, but I wanted to flag for people that it is our first opportunity in many months to have public comment at our next meeting, which is next Thursday, June 20th. It will be hybrid, and so in-person on the second floor of City Hall or virtually online. All of that information, what the public comment is about, the time, et cetera, is already on Lakewood Speaks, but you can also reach out to me directly. And then I lastly wanted to just throw out that there is a lot of neighborhood association, like fun things happening in Ward 2 this summer. So Sustainable Neighborhoods of Okan, Morse Park, and Iber are all doing various learnings, both virtual. I think the next one for Morse Park is a virtual one about low-water landscaping, so zero-scaping. And there are lessons on composting. There's picnics. Morse Park is also hosting like a social and a picnic, and they're really incredible. And of course, then there are the non-sustainable, the regular neighborhood associations. So Okan Park, Iber, and Two Creeks in Ward 2 are also doing a lot of social events. Neighborhood cleanups, food trucks are in Okan Park. And it just encourages folks to show up to those things and get to know their neighbors, create community, and also really helps influence the agenda of the city. And so if that's something you're looking for more avenues to do, your neighborhood association is a really, really good one to do that with. That was, I think, all of my Ward 2. It sounds like a lot when it's just me saying them. Normally, we split them in half pretty effectively. So thank you for bearing with me.
And now the very ready, Ward 1.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everyone that came and made public comment. I don't believe at this point I need to tell you where I stand on this. I'll continue to do this work with you. I'm happy to hear new voices joining in that coalition, and I look forward to us keeping that conversation going. So please keep reaching out on that. A lot of this has been mentioned already. I just wanted to flag something very interesting because we talked about SLASH, and there is a Ward 1 resident that used a downed tree to make a dragon boat. And he has a story that was recently aired on Nine News. So I think it's just a really clever way, creative way to use SLASH. We hear about this quite a bit in the community. I've been watching him put this boat together for the last three months. It did float, and I was really excited to see that. So I would encourage everyone to check that out. And then wanted to flag, I'm not sure if Counselor Neistrom brought this up, the Neighborhood Participation Program grants are open till July 1st, and they're available to up to $60,000 to support neighborhood programs. So that's it for me.
This Friday, we have office hours because the summer is full of travel and lots of opportunities. We will not have a, we didn't have a first Saturday ward meeting. But this Friday, Flag Day, the 14th, 9:30 to 10:30 upstairs in the Cabinet Room, is where we will have our office hours. Then there are other opportunities to travel and do things, and so no meeting in July. So I am back in the saddle. I was gone for a while, as other people will be and have been. And so now it's like, oh, boy, I have to start thinking again. So I was able to go to the pallet shelter area that the city and county of Denver has around Peoria and 38th. And that was really great to see what they're doing as a next step, as Denver then moves people out of encampments and said, we're closing this encampment and we have these shelters for you to go to. I thought, wow, that is really great, and it'll be, it'll be interesting to continue to explore that. I'm on the Housing Policy Commission as well, and so now I'm more fully informed with that. So I guess that's it for me.
Thank you, Council. I am very tired this evening, I will admit. It was a long weekend. We, this past weekend, was the Conference of All American City, and Lakewood was recognized as a finalist. It was an amazing amount of work and just want to express so much gratitude to all of our community members, all of our staff. It was an incredible amount of work, and we had a lot of fun. We also did have the opportunity with this process to learn about the other finalists and the winners and the programs that they were implementing across the cities, their cities. So that was really great to learn more. So just want to say thank you so much to staff. And I will admit to come, you know, the waterworks turned on a little bit. I'll say it upfront. The inspiration that I got from some of our community members, some have been involved for decades and some were young, and to see the dedication to the Lakewood community. And it was through the, we were highlighting three different programs that we have through the city. And one of those is the Sustainable Neighborhoods Program, which is actually a national program now. But many may not realize that was the inception from Lakewood. Lakewood started it, and so that's fun. Similar with Lakewood Speaks, it's old hat for us up here. Like, that's the tool that we use, and it's actually not even been around that long. But it's exciting to think about the other cities around, especially the metro area, that have modeled that within their own to make an opportunity to increase their reach for residents that cannot come to meetings. And they still want to hear, and they want to see what's on our agenda, and they want to comment on our agenda, but they can't be here. So that was another project, in addition to Lakewood Together. Having community input really, really influenced projects that we have across the city. So I was honored to be at the home of that, and I am very hopeful that we will come back again. Next year, maybe we'll be winning. Topic will be on sustainability, so we'll be highlighting programs across our city with that. So just wanted to say that we do also have, not this week, but next week, Colorado Municipal League Annual Conferences coming up. So several of your counselors will be joining me up in Loveland to learn from other municipalities that are across Colorado. We have a lot of the similar challenges, and it's a really, really fun time to be able to network with other counselors and other staff members as well to learn about what they're doing. So that'll be up in Loveland next week. So with that, just a quick reminder that we will not have a meeting on Monday night, next Monday night, because of the conference. And then to echo what Deputy City Manager had said with regards to this Friday's meeting, the school board, the joint school board meeting had schedule conflicts, so we're awaiting potentially a reschedule for the fall. Quick plug on the Mayor's Inspiration Award because we are closing up on the end of our calendar date line for that. Deadline is May, or I'm sorry, July 17th, July 15th. It's getting late here, apparently. If you know of a young person, an individual, a nonprofit, or a business that is really given to the Lakewood community, this is the opportunity to be able to bring that forward. that forward and give that person some recognition, some public recognition here in Lakewood. So would encourage you, you know, oftentimes, there's the kinds of things that we don't really realize. Maybe we knew someone that's doing a really great job. If you see someone out there, get a few people together and submit a nomination. It's really an opportunity, you know, these people, when we are investing so much in the community, oftentimes, it feels and is a very thankless job. And this is our opportunity. This is my opportunity to be able to support them and shine and highlight the good work that a number of people and businesses are doing across the community. So I would plug that. And with that, there being no further business this evening, I will go ahead and adjourn us at 9:45. Thank you.